Good evening. This is the caucus and council meetings of January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five in the council chambers. Presiding Officer of the Council, Milady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the home news tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, two sixty High Street, at five thirty P. M. Right now it's five thirty-five, but they tell me that clock is no good, but that's what it has. The council meeting will follow the caucus and closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak on a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Presentation. We have the presentation to former councilman BJ Bienvenido BJ Torres for his time of service. So we would like you to come up and we have.
If you want, because I don't think you would care.
Okay. I'm sorry. BJ, you can sit there while I read this. Okay. Resolution expressing appreciation, compliments, and gratitude to Bienvenido BJ Torres for his dedicated public service. Whereas Bienvenido BJ Torres was elected as a council member on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and served in the position until December thirty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas Bienvenido BJ Torres during his term attended countless meetings on behalf of the residents of the city of Perth Amboy. And whereas, in addition to his service as a council member, Bienvenido BJ Torres served in leadership position, including Chair of the Perth Amboy Arts Council, member of the creative placemaking team that created the award-winning Perth Amboy Creative Placemaking, and produces the Life at the Ferry Slip music series, offering live music by local artists and founder of the Water From Neighborhood Association. And where Bienvenidos BJ Torres has fulfilled his responsibility as an elected public servant in the interest of the residents of the city of Perth Amboy with intelligence and sense of public good. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, that the city council for itself and the residents of City Perth Amboy hereby tender to Bienvenido BJ Torres their appreciation, compliments, and respect for his past years of selfless dedication to duty as a trusted government official. That a certified copy of this resolution be presented to Bienvenido BJ Torres today. Okay? As we express in the past, thank you very much for your service, your dedication, and your passion for Perth Amboy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's all go over there. Take a picture with every person. Yeah.
Yes.
to say thank you. Thank you Perth Amboy. Even though I was not born here, the city has embraced me and made me one of its own. And I call this place my home, and I love this city. Thank you to the employees of Perth Amboy, especially the clerk's office, for really holding it down. Thank you to the council for working with me on behalf of the residents of Perth Amboy. And thank you for the administration for help sailing this ship. I really want to thank the residents of Perth Amboy. Taking a little break, but I'm not going anywhere, and I'm sure in the near future that I will still be advocating for the residents of Perth Amboy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Five minutes maximum per speaker per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three eighty-eight-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five A, six of the code of the city of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition. Number two, an ordinance amending Section one of ordinance numbered twenty-ten dash twenty-twenty-one of the city of Perth Amboy in the county of Middlesex, New Jersey, finally adopted December eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, in order to include an additional project. Agenda, public comment. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports, Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following. Check register report for the month of November, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of sixteen million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars with eighty-five cents. Check register report for the month of December, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of eleven million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred with twenty-two cents. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three eighty-eight-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five A, six of the code of the city of Perth Amboy. This is about addition. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey approving the application for a long-term tax exemption, authorizing the execution of a final financial agreement with Perth Amboy, an urban renewal LLC for the property located at Portion of Black One Thirty-One, Lat One dot zero-three, Black One Thirty-Five, Lat One dot zero-one, Two, Two dot zero-four, and Three through Twenty-Eight, Black One Thirty-Seven, Lat One, One dot zero-one, Two dot zero-one, Black One Thirty-Eight, Lat Number, Lat One, Black One Thirty-Nine, Lat Eight through Eleven, Fourteen, Nineteen, and Twenty-One through Twenty-One, Black One Forty, Lat One dot zero-one, One dot zero-three, One dot zero-four, Two dot zero-one, Two dot zero-two, Two dot zero-three, Two dot zero-four, Two dot zero-five, Two dot zero-six, Three, Three dot zero-one, and Four, and Black Two Thirty-Six, Lat One, One dot zero-one, Two, and Twelve, Three oh Four, Front Street, Three Ninety, Three Ninety, Front Street, property located on Front and Commerce Street, Thirty-eight Commerce Street, Three Ninety-three dash Three Ninety-five, Rector Street, Forty-seven Broad Street, Four Oh Two dash Four Oh Six, High Street, Fifty-Six Fayette Street, Three Eighty-five Rector Street, Two Sixty-two High Street, Three Sixty-six dash Three Seventy-six High Street, and Thirty-four Broad Street on the tax maps of the city of Perth Amboy. Resolution, public hearing on the calendar year, two thousand and twenty-five, bid budget R fifteen-one-twenty-five, and there is an amendment of ten thousand dollars in there. Should we have an explanation there on this? Jolanda, can you go over the amendment?
Good evening. Good evening.
A little closer.
How about now?
Okay.
Okay. So tonight I'm presenting the budget with the amendments based on the assessor's recent evaluation. There was a difference of ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine, fifty-eight, as the city had until January thirteenth to finalize the books for closing of the two thousand and twenty-five tax list. The updated assessment has been calculated according to the certified two thousand and twenty-five tax list provided by the county.
So there was a difference of ten, how much was it?
Ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine, fifty-eight.
Okay.
So I can go through the presentation, or I was just answering the specific question?
Just that specific question, because I think unless somebody else has another question, because that was different from the before.
That's the reason for the amendment, yes.
Yes. Any questions on that? So good.
Thanks.
R thirty-one, one-twenty-five. Is the resolution of city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey adopting the operating budget for the Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation, Inc., PAVIC, for two thousand and twenty-five? R thirty-two, one-twenty-five, extending the two thousand and twenty-five budget introduction and adoption date. Mr. Green, you wanted, I know that you went over with Rose and I when we were in the closed session about what this means.
What this allows for through the state? Yes, this is something that was promulgated by the state, which allows for all five hundred and sixty-four municipalities of twenty-one counties to extend their budget and introduction. So normally the introduction would be February tenth. This will allow the extension to March thirty-first, or the next scheduling municipal council meeting, or governing body meeting. And the adoption would normally be March twentieth, but this will allow the extension to be to April thirtieth, or the next scheduling governing body meeting. So it's better, of course, everyone would say it's better to have the time and not to need it than to need the time and not to have it. That's old adage that we used to say. So the state in its infinite wisdom allows for this, and I'm sure all five hundred and sixty-four municipalities and counties will take advantage of it.
Okay. Good. R thirty-three, one-twenty-five, authorizing an agreement with Middlesex County to provide funds in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars to the city of Perth Amboy to be used for cold blue warming center services. R thirty-four, one-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Skylands Area Fire Equipment and Training LLC for Morning Pride firefighter turnout gear under New Jersey State Contact Contract Number seventeen dash Fleet dash zero-zero-eight-one-zero, in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars with twenty-seven cents. R thirty-five, one-twenty-five, authorizing the sale of surplus property no longer needed for public use on an online auction website. R thirty-six, one-twenty-five, authorizing a refund in the amount of two hundred dollars to Michael Loretty, a tenant for the return of his key deposit for four keys with the Perth Amboy Harbor Side Marina. R thirty-seven, one-twenty-five, authorizing a contract for repairs, service, and parts for heavy-duty vehicles and equipment to Sanitation Equipment Corporation in accordance with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, E.S.C.N.J., twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-five M.C.E.S.C.C.P.S. in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars for calendar year, two thousand and twenty-five. R thirty-eight, one-twenty-five, reducing the contract with A.A. Berms LLC for the Sunshine Alley Improvement in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars with fifty-six cents. R thirty-six, R thirty-nine, one-twenty-five, authorizing a release agreement between Wendy Santana Avila de Pereira versus City of Perth Amboy in the amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. R forty-one, twenty-five, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Juan Bustamante versus City of Perth Amboy CP Number two thousand and twenty-two dash two zero zero forty-eight in the amount of fifty thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. R forty-one, one-twenty-five, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled William Perez versus City of Perth Amboy CP Number two thousand and twenty-two dash two four one seven zero in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. R forty-two, one-twenty-five, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Desiree Canapka versus City of Perth Amboy CP Number two thousand and twenty-three dash one zero zero four one in the total amount of nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars with fifty cents. R forty-three, one-twenty-five, conforming acceptance and execution of an agreement between Middlesex County Office of Human Services and the City of Perth Amboy Police Department for the calendar year, two thousand and twenty-five, Station House Adjustment Entrepreneur Program entitled Perth Amboy Entrepreneurship Program in the amount of thirty thousand, twenty-six dollars for the period of January first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. R forty-four, one-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with East Coast Emergency Lighting for the purchase of emergency lighting and equipment and installation in four two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Charger police all-wheel-drive vehicles under state contracts, Willen, New Jersey State Contract Number seventeen dash Fleet dot zero-zero-seven-one-nine, and ProGuard, New Jersey State Contract Number seventeen dash Fleet zero-zero-seven-six-eight in the amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, thirteen dollars with sixty cents. R forty-five, one-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Hertridge Fleet Services, Inc., for the purchase of four two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Charger police all-wheel-drive with options through Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System, forty-seven dash C.P.C.P.S. in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-one thousand, one, one thirty-two dollars. R forty-six, one-twenty-five, authorizing a contract with East Coast Emergency Lighting for the purchase and installation of emergency lighting and equipment for eight new police vehicles through New Jersey State Contract Number seventeen dash Fleet dot zero-zero-seven-six-one, and New Jersey State Contract Number seventeen dash Fleet dot zero dash zero-seven-one-nine in the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four that dollars with eight cents. R forty-seven, one-twenty-five, amending R five thirty-one, twelve twenty-four, authorizing the proper city officials to apply for the State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Office of the Attorney General Safe and Secure Community Grant Program as for the fiscal year, twenty-five, in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars subaward grant number twenty-five dash twelve sixteen for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-four to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. R forty-eight, one-twenty-five, authorizing change order number one to the contract with American Plumber LLC for contracting services related to the home improvement program in an amount not to exceed the sum of nine hundred and fifty dollars. R forty-nine, R forty-nine, one-twenty-five, authorizing submission of a grant to the provision of state community and family court appropriation programs to youth residing in Middlesex County. R fifty, one-twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Local Fright Impact Fund, L.F.I.F. R fifty-one, one-twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the NJ Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program to the fund, the Truckston Park Inclusive Playground Project in the total amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we will be having the public hearing for this particular item at the council meeting. R fifty-two, one-twenty-five, awarding a bid to RS Construction LLC for the contracting services related to the home improvement program in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars for sixty-ninety Elizabeth Street. R fifty-three, one-twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the Elizabeth Town Gas First Responders Grant Program in the amount of four thousand dollars to distribute combination smoke and carbon monoxide alarms to residents. R fifty-four, one-twenty-five, enabling supplemental funding requests to the State of the of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program in the amount of two million dollars for the Veterans Memorial Park. R fifty-five, one-twenty-five, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the fiscal year, twenty-five, Local Recreation Improvement Grant, L.R.I.G. Program in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for park improvements at Lucy's Lucy Park, Lucy Center Park, right? R fifty-six, one-twenty-five, accepting contribution of fifty thousand dollars from Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation, Inc., for the Rosen Garden Park Improvement. R fifty-seven, one-twenty-five, accepting the bid and awarding a contract to the variable frequency drive annual maintenance and repairs contract to Rapid Pump and Meter Service Corporation, starting January first, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. R fifty-eight, one-twenty-five, accepting the base bid and authorizing a contract with A.C. Schultz, Inc., for the repair and maintenance to the Runyon and Florida Grove Road Booster Station pumps, motors, and opportunices in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for one year, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. R fifty-nine, one-twenty-five, accepting the bid and awarding the annual contract for the repairs to the Second Street pump station pumps, motors, and opportunices to Rapid Pump and Meter Service Corporation in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. R sixty, one-twenty-five, accepting the case bid, the base bid, and authorizing a contract with Rapid Pump and Meter Service Corporation for the repair and maintenance of pumps, motors, and opportunices at Amboy Avenue State Street and Front Street pump stations in the, in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for one year, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. R sixty-one, one-twenty-five, authorizing change order number one to the contract with National Water Main Cleaning Corporation for the cleaning and lining of sewers and rehabilitation of manholes. and rehabilitation of manholes project in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. R sixty-two, one twenty-five, amending R seventeen, one twenty-five of the City of Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the City of Perth Amboy through the City of Perth Amboy Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office Ten Thirty-three Program to enable the Perth Amboy Police Department to request and acquire a ex- excess Department of Defense ma- equipment. R sixty-three, one twenty-five, consenting to the appointment of Jasleen Morales to the Rent Leveling Board for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. R sixty-four, twenty-twenty-four, consenting to the appointment of Christopher Rosario to the Rent Leveling Board for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. R sixty-five, one twenty-five, consenting to the appointment of Catherine Hackwes to the Rent Leveling Board as an alternate number one for a two-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. That's it, right? And con- closed session resolution, R thirty-one, twenty-five, authorizing a closed session at January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five council meetings to discuss the following. Number one, workers' compensation litigation, Juan Bustamante versus City of Perth Amboy, William Perez versus City of Perth Amboy, Desiree Canapka versus City of Perth Amboy. And number two, release agreement between, um, re- release agreement Wendy Santana Avila de Pereira. And also, what was it that you needed?
Uh, to discuss the reappointments of the council members on the boards.
Yeah, okay. So we can add that. Anything else anybody has? You don't, you don't need to do it.
What do you mean council members to the boards? You mean the council appointments to the boards?
We can just do it in public.
We could do that.
Mm-hmm, I think, I mean.
But that ain't necessarily a closed session topic, is it?
Are we discussing council appointments to the boards or which council members are going to be council liaison?
Liaison. I think we did it.
We started last meeting.
We only had that, what one?
We have a couple. We have.
Council person?
Let's, tell me what you're thinking and I'll let you know.
Well, there's Para. Usually there's a council member that goes to Para. One that goes to bid, one that goes to our council. But those are.
Planning board.
We already did planning board.
Other than this, uh, safety.
The what, I'm sorry?
The, the one that you're in.
The public safety one.
The public safety.
Okay.
Is yours expired? I don't, I don't have the list in front of me. I don't think, I, your, I don't believe your, yours is expired on Para.
Twenty-five, this.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thirty-first.
We did planning board. Para's okay. Is your term up? I don't have the boards in front of me.
No.
So I don't, what other?
Yours is not up? Yours is not up? I thought it was.
I don't, I don't, I didn't bring them with me.
Okay. Then we also have to assign one for, um, because I know, uh, BJ was in.
Arts Council. So that would be the only one.
The only one that we need to add.
So that's, you want to put that on as closed session?
Hmm.
Uh, yeah?
All right, um, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open, oh, no, first of all, we need a motion for the closed session.
Move it.
Second.
All, go ahead.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Day?
Yes. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention? Okay, it's open to the public on anything.
Sorry, I only made enough copies for the council members.
Oh, don't take it.
Sorry. It's, uh. So Stephanie Bracida, two-seven.
I should have one, yeah. I'll get a copy, don't worry.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, Stephanie Bracida, two-seven-four Davidson Avenue. Um, good evening, City Council, and happy new year. Uh, I missed two windows of opportunity to ask again to present to the City Council. As you know, today, the thirty-five-year pilot for the Kushner Project, which will include the demolition of the old police station at fifty-six Fayette Street and the destruction of the Thomas Mundy Peterson House site, has been reintroduced to the City Council for the first reading. Based on the copy of the Kushner Project Agreement on the attached agenda for today's meeting, I wasn't able to discern the difference between the posted agreement and the agreement which was tabled back on the August City Council meeting. Additionally, there are only two pages related to this project on the agenda labeled Exhibit A and Exhibit B, but both are blank. The June twenty-six project submission had pages with plans, specifications, costs, figures, et cetera. If I recall correctly from the August fourteenth meeting, doesn't the project being tabled mean that the proposal needed to be changed before it came back to the City Council? If so, what has changed and when will this information be available to the public? Has rehabilitation of the old police station and a dig for the T-TMP, excuse me, T-MP site been considered or even discussed with the developer, especially since they were previously willing to keep and rehabilitate the old police station? I've tried time and again to convey to you, the City Council, and Para, the value of these historic resources, the value that they add to our community, and their abilities to give back to our communities both directly and indirectly, with exception to the recently appointed Councilwoman Peralta, whom I have not had an opportunity to speak in front of until now. But for your reference, the papers I handed out, uh, had passed out, uh, is a summation of the information I found and alternatives I discussed. Please take everything I've said since June of last year into consideration and don't destroy our city's historic resources. Take into consideration how poorly it would reflect on the city if they were destroyed, especially with our city's integral role in the state during the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary coming up next year. The country isn't just celebrating the history of its founding, but also the history that has been made since. I know that both residents and visitors to our city care about the fate of our historic resources and would care if they are gone. And if the residents of Perth Amboy were truly aware of this project and the thirty-five-year pilot, they would show up to these meetings in support of rehabilitating the old police station and a dig for the Thomas Mundy Peterson House site. They showed up on August fourteenth, and they will show up again because they care. I ask you once again, table the thirty-five-year pilot until the agreement is renegotiated to include the rehabilitation and reuse of the old police station and that an archaeological dig for the Thomas Mundy Peterson House site is reconsidered. Additionally, I ask that you hold a separate community meeting for the project so that the residents truly know what is going on before you vote on this pilot with an extensive amount of awareness sent out, like leaflets in the mail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ernest Medina, seven sixty-four Harbor Town Boulevard. When, uh, Harbor Town was, uh, constructed, uh, they had condominiums and on the other side they had rentals. Unfortunately, on the condominium side, they seem to, on the first two loops that were built, they seem to have put the water line going across an unheated garage into the outer wall and then up into the kitchen. So we have to spend so much money on water being wasted because code enforcement allowed that. Code enforcement is to blame on this because they allowed the construction to do that. They fixed the problem in the second two loops. Each loop contains eleven units. So I, I'm asking, is there a possibility to give us a break on the water since we have no recourse? We have to let the water be running, otherwise pipes break, which they have in the past. And I hope it doesn't go like we did with the meters. I don't, it's probably, none of you were on the board back then, but when they constructed our homes, they put in a one-inch meter. And then it comes back down to a half inch. What that meant was that we were paying eight hundred dollars a year more than anybody in Perth Amboy without a drop of water extra. We bring it to the board, they did nothing. We picketed outside, we got the newspapers involved, we got Senator Vitality involved, and that's how we got that thing changed. I hope that this board can react a little better. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to ask, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Louis. Did you hear what he was talking about with water? This is our Director of Water and Sewer. Um, did you hear his question or no? What, what he was asking? And if you don't have a response now, then we can talk to him afterwards. But if you want to say something initially to what he's saying, he's saying they're paying eight hundred dollars more than Perth Amboy.
They changed the meter.
Okay.
They changed the meter.
And now you're saying the water's coming through and it's?
The water's always been coming through an unheated garage into the outer wall. According to code, you're not supposed to leave a, a supply line on an exterior wall. Let's keep in mind, I'm retired, I have an LLC home improvement of both New York and New Jersey, but retired now. So, uh, you're not supposed to do it.
Louis, you can come up and then, like I said, if we need to, I don't want to put you on the spot, we can talk to him afterwards too, but.
This, this is an eternal issue, that this is more for common code. Uh, but, uh, based on what he's saying, I think that, that part what he needs to be is, uh, uh, put some kind of insulation and, uh, and that would, they probably would take care of the problem. But I haven't seen it, I, I don't know what's going on.
So when Harbor Town first built his development, they built, you're saying the pipes close to the outer wall without any insulation?
It went into the overhang, which is external, and then it.
Right, it's not water, so, okay, you're right. It's not you. Thank, thank you for correcting me. It has nothing to do with water and sewer than its construction.
It was covered enforcement that let it go.
Okay, so let's talk afterward.
It's a government, uh, auspicy. I would assume that the government could turn around and say, okay, it's going to be super hard to fix, but maybe we could give them a break on the water because their water bill is ridiculous and unused water is being wasted.
One thing I was, one thing I was saying go on record with, it's not going to be a break from the government on the water. But what can be done after that? Uh, we'll speak afterwards, I'll speak to our code enforcement, who again, wasn't in charge of code enforcement, I assume, at the time it was built.
It was Scala.
Okay, yeah, something totally different.
Right, and there was a meeting, if you go back in the archives, Scala was here. And he went to the board and said, oh, we have a great responsibility with the builder, this, that, and the other. And I came out in the background, if you look at your archives, you'll hear me, that was bullshit. The reason such is because I sat with Scala and the project manager with a slew of different things and problems that they had. But he came up here and said that they had, everything was being taken care of, which was a lie, big time lie.
Got you.
So, I could go on, but.
Okay.
My time, so.
Right, we'll talk after, I'll get you then.
Get his information and probably bring us some input on that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Orlando Perez. Good luck with new council member, wish you luck. Don't nobody pick on you either. Um, a little problem here in Smith and Hobart is becoming what they call a U-turn circle. Maybe you should go out there and take a look or put a camera there. It's getting ridiculous. They don't stop it for the car, because, you know, the store there, the Dollar Tree, I understand their business. And it's getting bad. And with the U-turns, oh yeah, you got to see this. I'm ready to put a camera, they put it on YouTube. The YouTube circle. Believe me, they do right in front of the police guards, I seen them do it. It's time to wake up. It's time to stop watching your fingernails grow over there and start paying attention to what's going on here. I'm not being sarcastic, I'm telling you what it is. Go, go down and go on the weekend, watch. Bring a camera, you'll never believe it. It's a circus. That's, that's something, when a guy makes a U-turn and a cop slams the brake, yo, what are you doing? And he's just, eh, you know, have a nice day. Law and disorder, that's what it's coming down to in this town. Law and disorder, remember that, this is going to haunt you. Okay, so we'll leave that on the side now. The next thing here I find very interesting. What's the story with that old police station, huh? I hear a lot of things, maybe we should make it a museum? You know, I've been to other towns, I've been in Denver, Atlanta, some good cities, Chicago, and they have their own little museums. Go to Chicago, beautiful thing they got. Even Philadelphia, okay? That's if you don't get killed. They have their own museum, everything. This town has a lot of history. I did a project for the History Club in the library about General Cable. You can't believe what I found out. I grew up in this town all my life, I know every inch of this town. I know every little dirty trick. It's a whole new ballgame now. I've done this before with other council meetings. I rocked the boat and I'll do it again. I've been nice, I've been having shown up. But now, the party's over. Be prepared for some very shocking news with residents are going to bring up, like the guy here just brought up. Oh, you ain't seen nothing yet. Get ready, this is not a game, this is real. But anyway, I, it'd be nice to see a museum in this town. Be nice, really, it's a lot of history here. And it's a lot of good people will sit down and, you know, work something out. And I've been seeing numerous times, they've been coming up about this police station and all. He has an old building, but, you know, I don't know. That's the architect, he has to look at it. But it can be done, you can actually make it. You know, you're going to put a, what, affordable housing here? Oh, there's a big conflict with that too. You're going to put affordable housing, well, have those people do a little something for the community besides handing out political contributions. You know, the little brown paper bag? I know the game. It's time for you council members to have a big responsibility. Forget about the mayor, forget, I respect him, forget about him. You got to make the move. That's what you were elected for. You're not actors, you're not on TV. This is not a celebrity show. You have a responsibility. I don't like to talk like this, but that's what it comes down to. So thank you, I wish you the best, and I know it can be done.
Thank you.
Okay. Ray Clark, twenty-four sixteen Sunnyville. Um, I just got a statement on ordinance two. Uh, this administration is not looking good by not seeing the writing on the wall, not being transparent. Stop destroying the city's history, stop letting old buildings go. Here's a petition to save the former police building. A five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the state could be used for improvements to update the former firehouse. The architect who built it also built a school. It's solid, there's nothing wrong with it, and makes no sense to find new land on the smaller lot. Those two buildings can be saved and be an asset and benefit to the city once again, as it done before. I say just get rid of the first aid squad, build three family homes, keep the brick wall behind it, and keep the existing house, and move the impound cars to the DPW property. The clock church on High Street and Jefferson Street was going to be demolished years ago. I wonder why it's still there. The HPC hasn't been treated right recently, they need a stronger ordinance, they need better support from administration, need legal representation. Former administrations haven't provided funds. Councilwoman Rose said before, we can't call this city historical if we keep taking away buildings. buildings. Council President Malati says she was looking forward to support and participate in 2021, December of 2021 archive. This is disrespectful by Mayor Cobb, it's sad that the city hasn't invested in any way in its history. Cobb keeps saying, city of history, city of future, well, how come he was on the HPC board previously? Wasting grant funds, giving money to a con artist, not giving money to the Salvation Army, not giving money to the HPC. Forget about the proprietary house, we've been there and done that. There's other historical sites and items that need more attention. The police building has a lot of potential, it's a perfect fit to add to the city. In Detroit, they are restoring old buildings that are in way worse condition, and in Saroval, they just saved their old building, and they have no plan on reuse of it. The apartment project does not benefit the city then or now. The issue is snow removal, flood zone, making street sizes smaller, curb lines of sidewalks too big, islands in the street, rent cost, quality of space, no tax, not keeping his promises, construction jobs for apartments shouldn't be here, we have enough. Stop putting more stress on city services, anything historical must be, shouldn't be messed with, a building's more important than Sunshine Alley. The city could give a building to the state as a landmark and have them cover the cost. It's the last historical building in town that symbolizes what the city was built on, an industrial legacy, was part of the WPA. I say reopen the firehouse and keep Metapile, include that in the master plan. Kushner does not care about the city, it's a possible 60-years bad impact here of more suffering, you shouldn't give them nothing, please cancel this, this is fraud, this is nothing good, this is not the solution. We are overcrowded, the city's current people have lost respect of everything in its past, recreate the preservation committee board, and it doesn't seem to save its history. City Hall staff has told the HPC they are interfering with this when they're doing their job, so what's their purpose? After this, probably no longer have the HPC, if the two buildings are gone, and the city has failed once again, what's the purpose as a historian? Just have him for the Fourth of July holiday, that's it. Save the former police building for, it's a perfect, perfect fit for programs, workshops, museum, Code Blue Shelter, PEL program, uh, more library space, art gallery space, mechanic workshop. People say they do care, but I think they are lost. The people don't want to see the writing on the wall, putting a lot of money into the library, keeping it up when they need more space. There's al, there's also library items in the fire museum that shouldn't be. Please remove the firehouse for the state squad, the existing house, and the police station from the plans and have that area re-looked at. Possibly the lot next to the apartments, possibly build a performing arts center there, and the rest of the lots could be parking. Crow's Nest, that's bad too, I don't think nobody's looking at that. Things have been unthought of, planned out, 25 years and now, and Harbor Town, when they were building Harbor Town, the firehouse was promised, but it wasn't promised. So I don't know what happened there. But, uh, Cobb and his team of people and their campaign has said before, becoming mayor, to continue to try new ideas and invest, and relive our local history. There's no communication in City Hall, and I would think the city will want the kids and the public to keep the kids off the streets, in schools, and in programs, become good people. Uh, that's it. Parito. This is Basura.
Thank you.
A lot of incorrect information.
Anybody else?
Good evening, Council President, Members of the Council, Ken Gonzalez, 110 High Street. Happy New Year to all of you. Councilwoman Peralta, welcome to the chambers in this new capacity. I wish you much success and happiness. Happiness, or best of luck, but, for that way. Folks, I want to, number one, thank you for acknowledging the contributions of your outgoing council member, BJ Torres. I spoke at his last meeting of, I think, the impact that he made, and I'm glad that you guys honored him today. I also want to acknowledge some of the comments that were made by a member of the public, Stephanie, with regards to the Kushner property that's on for first reading today. And I just want to comment, I took a look at the agenda available online and the attachments, and she's correct, there's a little statement that's available, but as far as financial agreement and other details that were included in the previous time this was on the agenda, that wasn't included this time around. That, quite frankly, puts particularly Councilwoman Peralta in a bad situation. The four of you who were here on the council before had the opportunity to review that ream of paperwork, which was important to take a look at, to understand the full ramifications that this project could have to impact the city of Perth Amboy, whether it be beneficial or negative. Councilwoman Peralta, Councilwoman Peralta doesn't have that benefit because that information was not provided to her, that I can see in this package, unless it was given to her just separately and privately. I'm gonna comment on this briefly. Again, I said this when it was on the council previously, going forward with Mr. Kushner's organization troubles me. The city of Perth Amboy has an extremely lengthy negative history with Kushner vis a vis the Landings, we all know that that led into protracted litigation. Going back over 10 years when I was a councilman, and we were in negotiations with Mr. Kushner to build this very project, that this administration is looking forward to trying to push forward, I sat in a meeting with Jared Kushner and other members of the council and the mayor, and expressed our concerns on the project. His response was to issue a lawsuit against the city, and including the mayor and individual council members, because he just didn't like the fact that we were questioning him. He was playing nasty hardball. I have no particular reason to believe that that's changed. In fact, to make clear, you should know who you're getting into potentially business with. I'll point out that if you Google Kushner properties, you'll find out that back in 2022, just two years ago, there was a lawsuit settled from Baltimore, Maryland, where they paid out the Kushner properties, 3.25...
Excuse me, in the back.
$3.25 million in civil penalty and restitution to settle the 2019 lawsuit over the allegations of charging tenants illegal fees and failing to maintain their property. This isn't ancient history, this isn't a whole different entity, this is who you're basically, potentially, gonna get into bed with, and you're potentially gonna offer them 35 years where they don't have to pay any taxes. Please, think carefully. If this was such a good project for Perth Amboy, why don't we do it with somebody else? Somebody who doesn't have a spotty, negative record of hurting people and hurting Perth Amboy. As far as the project itself, keep in mind, folks, you're talking about the density of over 600 units of apartments on High Street here, when you have Eddie Trujillo building another huge development over by ShopRite, coming online. And there's questions that were raised about the lack of parking, that I don't believe the public got a satisfactory answer, because as I understood it, the idea was that part of it was gonna be parking that was gonna be constructed, and part of it was gonna just be taking into account local parking, which is gonna be already, which is already tight. With regards to, and the other issue when we asked from the public, how's this gonna affect the school district? We were told it was gonna be inconsequential number of new students were gonna be living in those 600 and whatever, I think two or five units of housing. I, I just question how anybody could say that with a straight face. In fact, members of the audience laughed when they heard that. Please, think very carefully about this, folks. The future Perth Amboy literally is gonna be in your hands and your vote when you vote on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, William Petrick, 790 Harnett Street. Yeah, I'm gonna talk about the same thing, right? Ordinance first reading, number two. It's a, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, right, approving an application, long, long-term tax exemption, right, for urban renewal LLC. I don't know why they don't put down there Charlie Kushner. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to meet with Charlie, I have, as some of you may know. He's a convicted felon, right? He's unethical, and you can't expect anything, as the former speaker just said. The people who bought into his last project, which was a for-sale project, and kudos to our former mayor Voss for putting together something where they had to buy it and not allow Charlie or Jared to build rental units. The last thing we need here is more rental units. But I met with Charlie. Charlie couldn't find Perth Amboy on a map if you asked him to point it out. If it was just Middlesex County, he couldn't find Perth Amboy. He doesn't care about this, this is just more financial money for him, he doesn't give a crap about Perth Amboy or any of us. And you people shouldn't care about Charlie. First of all, the old police station, you should give that to the historic trust and let a group of people rehab that through grant money, like a lot of other communities have done. And just allow them to take that on. The former Central Firehouse, uh, when Joe Voss was here again, we had seven fire companies and the paid department, the uniform department, said they could handle fire calls and, and cover Perth Amboy with one firehouse. And that's how Joe Voss closed down the other houses and sold them, and put them back, some of them, back on the tax rolls, and worked out of the new firehouse where we are right now. Because the paid department didn't need more than one firehouse. And if, and I, and I know this present chief has tried to build one under the Outer Bridge, that failed. When I was sitting up there, then he tried to build one at Amboy and Inslee. We bought some of that property, and I don't know what happened with that project, it just stalled and stopped. Now again, he wants to build one on the corner of High and New Brunswick Avenue? Let that property be sold and back on the tax rolls, and if you really have to, we still own Central. Let them rehab that. That was always my goal, if they needed another firehouse, let them go back to Central Firehouse on, on High Street. Rehab that one, it'll cost us less money, no matter what the BS is about, it'll cost us so much. Less money, the building is standing, it's a solid building, built back in the 1960s when they really built a strong building. You could rehab that and put them in there, there's plenty of room. Don't get persuaded that they need a new firehouse. It's really a way of building up the fire departments, it'll be even more members, and it'll be, it'll cost us even more money in tax dollars. But this is a very bad idea for Perth Amboy. If you look to South Amboy, on their waterfront, what do they have? Single-family homes, right? Million-dollar homes. If you look across the river from Charlie's project and Staten Island, they have multi-million dollar homes. But here, all we can think about is apartments? That's it? We can only build apartments, that's all we could think? Apartments and warehouses, that's all Perth Amboy deserves. You know, the, the party, the Democratic Party wants to use Perth Amboy as a dumping ground. We see that. We see that with the hospital and the community health, which is actually a psychiatric hospital. They're pushing out most of everything else, and putting 82, 81 beds of psychiatric hospital there. They don't care about Perth Amboy. But you people are supposed to be up there caring about the community and guiding the community. This is the caucus meeting. I haven't heard anybody question any of the resolutions as, as the council president read them. You guys ought to participate and question as she reads them. Stop, let's talk about this one, or that one. I know you're not gonna talk about all of them, but you should talk about some of them. But anyway, getting back to this, you know what? He hasn't done anything in 20 years in that project, and when he did, when he originally built them, he built them faulty, he would not man up and repair them, he was blaming all his subcontractors. Even after the lawsuit and the settlement, he did nothing. Now he wants to build apartment buildings, this is gonna be another Harbor Town.
Thank you.
You can take the property back, and you can give it to other developers who will develop single-family, multi-million dollar homes there, and it'll be a benefit to the community with no pilots.
I'm disagreeing. Misagreeing. Was there somebody here? Didn't they say that we're gonna be here? The other... Are they gonna be here next week? Okay, okay, that would be... Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi.
Yes.
Sage Neves, 270 King Street. Happy New Year, I'm glad to see everybody as well. You got a nice, good haircut, and it looks great, just wanted to say. So, here's the thing, right? BJ is no longer with us on the council, and that worries me for several reasons, as former council president William Petrick said, nobody asks questions. I didn't hear any questions. Stacy, you are new, so you can ask all the questions you want, and I hope you do, and I implore that you do. I have a question. I know the answer, but I want to know if everyone else knows the answer. The trolley that was purchased, where is that currently being housed? Where is it parked?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
The, the trolley that was purchased, where is that being parked? Where, where are we, where do we have it housed?
Okay.
You need the answer?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is it, is it relative to the agenda?
Well, I mean, I, I, I know the answer, but I, I want to make sure everybody else knows.
We know the answer as well, so.
Right, okay, so the, the former firehouse, that's on High Street, right?
Well, I mean, we're all, we're all aware of it, right?
So the firehouse, okay. So, you know, now that that's getting thrown away to the Kushner company, where are we gonna park it now? Where, where are you gonna park it? And I'm assuming the, okay, so, but I'm assuming the firehouse is still good enough to park it, right? I mean, if you have it there. Police headquarters, I'm gonna say it again, right? The 250th is just around the corner. We have less than a year now, right? Time is moving fast, and Perth Amboy is on the scope. And we are on the scope because of one building, Proprietary House. They have been pouring money into Proprietary House in preparation of the mansion to be representable for the 250th. And my concern is, is that the city has not, at least to my knowledge, publicly said or started talking about what they're planning, or what the initiatives that they have going on. You know, we're going to be a welcome center, right? People are going to be going all around the state, visiting certain welcome centers, and we are fortunate enough to be on that list, thanks to Proprietary House. But what are we doing as a city? What is the city planning to do? My problem with it is that we're losing historical assets, and they're not small assets, they're big assets, right? I mean, Thomas Mundee Peterson, do I have to say, right? The old police headquarters, industrial revolution, I mean, why is it so difficult for us to talk about it and try to push to save it, right? There's always a way out of everything, right? Nothing is concrete. I mean, we saw the plans with the Kushner company, everything that they promised. I remember being in the old Landings building and seeing a mock model of, you know, what they anticipated to do, that pier, the, you know, the commercial space, and they weaseled out of it, they got out. There is always a way out, you just have to think, and you have to be willing to try to get out of any situation that you're in. I mean, the Kushners are bad, it doesn't take us to tell you that the Kushner company is bad. These are very bad people. They're not looking for your interest, mine, our interest, they're not, right? I mean, if, if you were in a relationship with somebody and they were punching you, would you stay? If you had a, you know, you had to choose, you'd leave. So, think. Try to think outside of the box, it's not impossible. And you're not alone, and your voice is not silent either. I know there's a lot that you guys say that goes on behind the scenes that you can't talk to us about, but you're our voice, and we are your voice just as much. And I think together, we can try to do something and steer us in the right direction.
Thank you. Anybody else? I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against. I would like to make a comment of a few things that were mentioned tonight. Mr. Gonzalez, yes, Ms. Peralta was, had a presentation about... Had a presentation about the Kushner property. It was not just whatever was online. And another thing is, we also want to remind you that every single one of us know that when they have questions, they can address it with the administration prior coming to the meeting. If the member is not doing their job to do that part and doesn't ask the question here, it's probably because they already got the answer through their questioning. So, I just want the public to know about that we do that and that we have, we have to do what we need to do to get the answers. And we appreciate every single thing that has been said tonight. And we will listen to you, okay? And now I need a motion to go to close session.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against. After the close session, we'll be back for the meeting for tonight. Thank you.
You know, one thing you got, um, I think there are.
You okay?
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. We're back from closed session. I need a motion to return from closed session.
Move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? And I also need a motion to adjourn caucus.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we move to the council meeting. Okay, this is, uh, good evening all. Uh, this is the council meeting for January twenty second, twenty twenty five. Presiding Officer of the Council, Lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and the city, on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber right after the, uh, City Hall two sixty High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now is seven forty. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices should you need to make a telephone call. Please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Vocal, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, please watch over this governing body. Please provide us with the wisdom and understanding of what the needs of our citizen and our city. Uh, I also want to pray for those, uh, troops abroad and also in the nation that are protecting our freedom, protect their family and protect all themselves in their duties. Um, also, I want to pray for our students, for our youth, um, to get guided on the right path to continue to be a good citizen in ours, in our city. And with that, I say amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, on our agenda, on the caucus meeting, we have the presentation, um, to former council, councilman, the Bienvenido B. J. Torres. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces For Use By Handicapped Persons, Ordinance Number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five, see of the code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about addition. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? It's open to the public if anyone wants to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? And I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty ten dash twenty twenty-one of the City of Perth Amboy and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, finally adopted December eighth, twenty twenty-one, in order to include an additional project. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public, whoever wants to speak on this. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comment. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public on agenda items only.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Anyone? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comment.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Uh, reports. Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following. Number one, check register report for the month of November twenty twenty-four in the amount of sixteen million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and three dollars with eighty-five cents. Number two, check register report for the month of December twenty twenty-four in the amount of eleven million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars with twenty-two cents. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Uh, number one, an ordinance of City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces For Use By Handicapped Persons, Ordinance Number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as Chapter two fifty-five, see of the code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about addition. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second. Vocal, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, approving the application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with a, with Perth Amboy, a Perth A Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at a portion of block one thirty-one, lot one dot zero three, block one thirty-five, lots one dot zero one two, two dot zero four, and three through twenty-eight, block one thirty-seven, lots one, one dot zero one two, and two dot zero one, block one thirty-eight, lot num, lot one, block one thirty-nine, lots eight through eleven, fourteen, nineteen, and twenty-one through twenty-three, block one forty, lots one dot zero one, one dot zero three, one dot zero four, two dot zero one, two dot zero two, two dot zero three, two dot zero four, two dot zero five, two dot zero six, three, three dot zero one, and four, and block two thirty-six, lot one, one dot zero one, two, and twelve, three oh four Front Street, three ninety Front Street, property located on Front Street and Commerce Street, thirty-eight Commerce Street, three ninety-three dash three ninety-five Rector Street, forty-seven Broad Street, four oh two dash four oh six, High Street, fifty-six Foyet Street, three eighty-five Rector Street, three sixty-two High Street, three sixty-six dash three seventy-six High Street, and thirty-four Broad Street on the tax maps on, of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Vocal, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
No.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Resolution, um, I, uh, public hearing on the calendar year twenty twenty-five bit budget R fifteen one twenty-five with an amendment of ten thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Anybody who wants to speak on the bit budget? Seeing none?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
President, just to reiterate that the budget's being amended from how it was introduced as discussed during the caucus session.
The numbers.
I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
We do vocal?
No, now, now you can go through the adoption.
Okay.
You can move the resolution.
Okay. So, R thirty-one, I think it's, it doesn't say anything very different. I guess you gave me this. Okay, R thirty-one, one twenty-five, a resolution of the Perth Amboy County of Middlesex, New Jersey, adopting the operating budget for the Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation, Inc., PAVIC for twenty twenty-five with the amendment mentioned before. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Vocal, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, look through the resolutions and, um, we're gonna pull fifty-one. Fifty-one, R fifty-one. Anything else that anybody wants to pull? That was it? Okay. So, the consent agenda is R thirty-two, one twenty-five through R fifty, one twenty-five, R fifty-two through R sixty-five, one twenty-five. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Okay, um, so we need to do a public hearing for R fifty-one, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department on Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program to fund the Truxton Park Inclusive Playground Project in the total amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I need a motion to open it?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay. This Vasquez.
Good evening, Council. Uh, so today we have a presentation. Yeah. All right, so, um, Jake's Law Application. Good evening, everyone. As you know, my name is Tashi Vasquez. I'm the Director of the Office of Economic and Community Development. Today I will be presenting the City of Perth Amboy's application for Jake's Law funding for the Truxton Inclusive Playground. We will cover key aspects, including public engagement, cost estimates, environmental impacts, and next steps if, um, for making the project a reality. Next slide, please. Uh, what's Jake's Law legislation? Jake's Law promotes the creation of a fully accessible playground, ensuring children of all abilities can play together in a safe and inclusive environment. The city has met the public notice compliance requirements by publishing notices online in the local newspapers fifteen days before the hearing. The application process, so, I mean, Ryan, this is literally so that we could apply for money for an all-inclusive playground. The requirements through NJDEP, Green Acres, require this public hearing. Part of that process includes public engagement, submissions of required documents such as the concept plan, cost estimate, environmental impact, and today's public hearing. The application process involves, like I said, everything, yeah, I just mentioned it, I'm not gonna go over that. Um, next slide, concept plan. Inclusive play structures with ramps, sensory areas, and quiet zones, poured-in-place rubber ser, uh, safety surfacing, benches, signage, et cetera. The proposed project aims to transform Truxton Park into a fully inclusive play area, featuring accessible sensory zones, et cetera. Environmental impact analysis, which is required before you can apply. The proposed action will not significantly alter the park's exist, existing landscape as the playground will be installed on already cleared land, minimizing disruption to vegetation and wildlife. The anticipated increase in recreation will attract families with children of varying abilities, promoting social interaction and community engagement. I'm just gonna go to the, uh, co, uh, cost estimate. Uh, the project is a little bit more than what we are applying for because there is a match requirement. Playground structure will cost about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Surfacing is another two hundred and five thousand. Landscaping and infrastructure, a hundred and ninety-two, for a total estimated cost of one point zero two million dollars. Um, the city is committed to securing the necessary funds to ensure a successful project upon completion. And then it's required that we go over specific environmental impacts. Uh, impact assessment has evaluated all potential impacts. Short-term impacts, minor noise and pollution, and temporary wildlife disruption during construction. Long-term benefits is increased accessibility, safer playground use, and improved community engagement. Adjacent, uh, adjacent environmental features such as a nearby residential area would not be significantly affected as construction will be scheduled to, um, doing off-season or off-peak season to minimize disra, uh, disruptions. Uh, the project requires a soil erosion and settlement control certification, which will be obtained prior to the construction of the project. Uh, so for next steps, uh, meeting minutes will be recorded and submitted with this application, ensuring all public comments are, um, and responses are documented. Uh, we will review, we did put out a survey, so we had public engagement pieces, including this public hearing. We had a survey that went citywide through an email blast, um, and on social media websites, and it was also on the city website. And the second piece was a, a poll on both Instagram and Facebook. So all of that will be submitted with this information to Green Acres along with the application. Again, if funded, we should, uh, we should know if we received this funding, uh, before the end of this year. Um, the city is dedicated to mitigating any potential issues by implementing best practices in construction and scheduling. Required to say that. And then no alternatives were considered for this project as the concept plan was specifically designed for Truxton Park. Uh, it is the administration's goal to make all of our parks inclusive. We're starting with Truxton. Uh, and I, it is important to note that, um, ADA pieces have been added to other parks around the city. This will be the first all-inclusive playground, uh, set, and with the goal of doing that citywide, um, as we move forward. Any questions or comments?
Well, my question was gonna be, but you answered it. It was, because I always see that park is always like busy. I see all the kids, um, playing there. And how was that gonna be done, you know, to, to, the interruption of that going on? But you said that you're gonna do it.
The goal would be to do it off-peak season, and I mean, The goal would be to do it off-peak season, and, I mean, people take their kids to the park in the snow, so there's really no off-peak, right? Um, but it, it was specifically chosen because you have Twelton Park in the same neighborhood, and not that I wanna send people to Woodbridge, but right across the street you have Warren Park, which is a county park. We encourage folks to participate, you know, to, while this is under construction, that we would encourage the use of other city parks and county parks.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else?
What are we anticipating for, like, the grant amount? Is there an amount?
So, it does, it's, the resolution is there. We have a resolution to apply for, I think, seven hundred.
Alright, that's all from us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak on this? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, now is, I need a motion to
Adopt.
To adopt, uh, R fifty-one.
Move it.
Second.
Everybody's falling asleep today.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Okay, so, um, now we go to plu- public portion. I need a motion to open to the public. Five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public on anything.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, it's open to the public.
Vince Macule, two fifteen, Charlton Street. Just comment, I know you have reviewed, uh, continual membership for the rent board. I'd like to hope that the City of Perth Amboy, the council, and the mayor will continue to support the rent leveling board. It might seem like things happen beyond this scene, but we've reviewed hundreds of different documents, applications and dozens, and we've also met with organizations such as N double A C P, the Charter School in, in education, Landlords Group, which I wasn't invited, they probably liked that, and Make the Road. We've met four different organizations, uh, over that course. We've also, um, this board was established in the political season about four years ago. But I believe the board itself is legitimate and should be supported fully by the mayor and the council, with any predicaments, any problems that go forward, including defending the legal right to have such a board. I say that because the overriding emphasis, I think recently, we've had, when it board was established, there was a, uh, consent agreement, which the city entered into, to rectify a situation with one particular property. I think such a predicament might have existed when the particular case came before the city. But presently, just to fixate on such a legal action and not represent that the board exists and should exist and has a right to review both applications by landlords as well as tenants. I think that I'd like to make that very strong, because in the last year, as I've said in recent, we mostly review decontrol applications. Definitely over ten to one is what's happening. Again, I'm not going to take too much time, but I'd like to, again, if I may get them, I'm sorry. I think the tenants themselves should have a right, and I'm doing a little bit of review in some Spanish remedical, remedial education myself. And if anybody is available at these meetings or otherwise, I'd like to go over whether a tenant is responsible and can fill out a complaint form. Again, this is the second time I've done this, because I think what happens is the real estate industry, as well as the legal people who represent people, are the primary people that are applying for the board, and that is not the reason solely for the board. The board is to accept applications and complaints from residents and tenants. So here again, as I, here is a complaint form in Spanish and English, which is available for the residents of Perth Amboy. I think we're undergoing some ethical situations, some, uh, situations with the, uh, ethnic portions of this city. And I think anybody who, a landlord feels that they are going to raise rents simply because their property is more important than establishing that somebody in Perth Amboy has a right to a legal rental unit, which means right now two and a half or three percent allowable increase. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your information. Anybody else?
Stephanie, proceeded two seven four Davidson Avenue. I just wanted to see if I was gonna get an answer to the questions I asked during the caucus meeting. The first one was if a project being tabled means that the proposal needs to change before it comes back to the city council?
The ordinance, ordinances have a, expired basically when the year turned. So, even though it was put on the table, you can't introduce an ordinance in one year and adopt it in another. So, the council has to reintroduce the ordinance now in twenty twenty-five, even though it was tabled in twenty twenty-four.
So that means that it didn't have to change from last year?
No, it's a new ordinance in twenty twenty-five.
But the contents of the ordinance itself?
The ordinance is the same ordinance.
So plans don't have to change?
No.
Because it was tabled?
No.
Okay. So, then I guess my next question was related to the, I guess, the issue with Exhibit A and Exhibit B and the lack of other plans and specifications, cost and figures. When will that be made available to the public?
They'll be included in the next council packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
For, for table, New Jersey. The guy that spoke about the rentals and all, I understand here we have a thing called the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. They deal with housing too. And I don't know if they play a role on this, or they look into it, but I've been hearing, if it's true, they've been coming down to some cities, and they've been looking at rentals from landlords and all. I don't know if they have jurisdiction or what, but I know they play a role. They do intervene, the Department of Community Affairs. I could be wrong, maybe I'm right, I don't know, but I'm gonna look into it myself. Something's not right. Cause there's people here paying a lot of rent. You just hear the stories about what they're paying. Yeah, I'm, I'm paying it. Look what happened in Edison. There was a big stake about that in Edison, about the rent. And this is supposed to be what? A pu- poor community? We got poor people living here. Well, why they paying sixteen, seventeen, seventeen hundred dollars in rent? There's a big problem with affordable housing too, with this stuff. Somebody's gotta look into this. What, what's going on here? You got affordable housing, you got this, 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 this. There's a big shakeup here. Jersey City just made the, the list out, out there with these affordable houses and all. There's gonna be a big conflict with this. So I think the city council, I'm asking, you better look into this, seriously. It's, it's, it's gonna really come down on you. Because rent here is really weird. Start talking to the people. What they charging. It, it's, something's not right. The whole thing doesn't seem right. Well, I'll do, I'll get in touch with the Department of Community Affairs. See what I, what I come up with, and he's a pretty good guy there, but you guys gotta do your part too. It doesn't hurt. Hey, Department of Community Affairs, what's going on here? I don't know. It, it's something shaky, very shaky. All these towns are having this problem. With the low-income housing, then they switch over, cause I know you make a, uh, a, the low-income housing or not, by the mountain law, you have to have so many floors, low income. And some of the places weren't doing that. Oh, yeah, where's this? But you look at the blacklist, find out, no, they never did that. Were you supposed to have two or three floors for low-income housing? They never did it. In paper, they said they did, but they didn't do it. You oughta look into that. I think it's, um, seriously, look into this. Really. This is not, I'm not asking much. Something's not right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we go to comments, I would like to say that, um, Councilwoman Peralta is, is being
Asked.
And she's okay to be part of the Arts Council. So she will be getting all the information from Vicky, and, um, and she will be representing the council in that particular, uh, board. Council comments? Um, Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. Just to elaborate more on comments I mentioned last time, once again, um, thank you for all the businesses that are getting expanded. I'm super excited with Tattoo, especially, um, coming up this month, the grand openings, just keeping contact with all the grand openings on the website. Additionally, thank you so much for the presentation on the inclusive playground. I think that's super crucial, and Perth Amboy does have a great reputation. A lot of people from other towns, they do appreciate the services that our schools have for inclusivity, along with our services. So I'm excited. This is, this is just one of the first steps and plans. And thank you as well for engaging with social media. I did see a lot of engagement with that. So thank you, Tashi, and the entire team. And that's it.
Okay. Councilwoman Morales?
Uh, good evening. Thank you. I'm gonna try to keep this short, as I'm still recovering from two weeks ago when I was sick. I just wanna, since I wasn't here last meeting, I just wanna congratulate and welcome Councilwoman Peralta. I'm looking forward to working with you the next four years. And also, uh, there was a comment earlier, as, uh, our council president also made a comment about, you know, uh, none of us here are making any comments or questioning what's on the agenda. Just wanna reiterate that prior to the agenda, I do do my due diligence and ask questions if I have any questions prior to the agenda, and this is why they give us the agenda a week, you know, a few days before, so we could ask questions. If I do have additional questions right by the meeting, I will ask during the meeting. Just also wanna commend DPW, the, you know, for, for the good work that they did for cleaning up the snow stor- uh, the snow removal. Um, and it is cold out there, so, and a lot of, uh, sickness, as you know, is going around. So just please be safe, be careful, um, and take care of yourself. Stay warm. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta, any comments?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I did want to say, thank everyone for your well wishes today, and thank you, um, Councilwoman Morales. I also wanted to ask for your patience. I know I'm new here, um, but I did want to ask for your patience. Um, in all the redevelopments that are going on, positive things have been occurring in Perth Amboy, and will continue to with the great, um, team and staff that we have. As you saw on the agenda, there are grants for the cit- for our citizens. Um, so we are hearing your concerns, but we just ask that you are patient. And I'm excited about all the progress that's ahead. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Vasquez. It was very well delivered. Um, and have a good night, everyone. Thank you again.
Okay, Councilman Puccio?
Thank you.
The man.
Um. I don't think anybody realizes how hard it is to be up here, because a lot of the things that have gone on over the last twenty-five, thirty years were people kicking the can down the road. And just like the water, just like the project that we voted on tonight, sometimes you have to make decisions, and they need to be done. You know? You gotta play to, with the cards that you're dealt with. We're also responsible for how the money is spent. And you know what? You may not like us when we do something that you don't like, but at the end of the day, it's hard to make these decisions. Don't think we just, you know, make the decisions on a lark. They're hard to make. And you know what? I'm fortunate enough, I've been on this planet for sixty-nine years, and I've seen things, how they wa- how, how they were done here over the last thirty years. Now things are starting to get done. You may not like it, but guess what? They have to be done, and we're making those decisions, you know? And I just wanna thank, uh, Director Vasquez for the outstanding job that she did tonight with her presentation, and the job that she does. And, uh, welcome again, Ms. Peralta. It's always a pleasure to serve with you. And you, Madam President, and Ms. Morales, and Ms. Cruz. So, like I said, it's not easy, and, you know, we sit up here and we hear your complaints. And don't think for a minute that none of us don't say things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Puccio? And I just wanna say thank you for everyone who participated tonight. Uh, also, Ms. Vasquez, thank you for the presentation. Ms. Flores, also thank you for answering our questions and concern. So with that, I s- say good night. I need a motion to close, uh, the council meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Good night, everybody.